Good evening, everyone, welcome. This is a meeting in Oregon, the Oregon Cable TV Committee. Request to provide additional funding of $1,500 for strategic planning process. Funding would come from the cable TV fund balance, so welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Steve. Just a few brief comments in relationship to the proposal you have. This is actually a part of a greater process that the cable access station has been taken on. In January of 2018, one of our goals that we set for the year was to complete a strategic planning process for the cable access stations. Our first stage of that was an information gathering process. We've pretty much completed that process. It's not surprising that we found a few changes have occurred since 1985 when the cable access stations were first set up. One of those areas is in relationship to some policies and procedures and business documents that should be in place for a business organization. What we found is that there are some documents there, but a lot of them needed to be updated. Some of them didn't exist or hadn't been done. The proposal you have is from Boris Franks, who is the business consultant that we've been working with on strategic planning. He would be actually providing graphs of that material to the Oregon Foundation Board and the TV Committee, and we would be reviewing those and updating them and making them more appropriate, fixing them, so to speak, as far as our actual documents. To complete that work could be, he would be doing, he required about 90-day period. He would do all of the documents that you have listed there, and it's actually, I think there's 28 listed, but it's actually greater than that because some of them, there's like job descriptions and some of that where there's multiple documents involved, so I think it's like 35 or 40 documents he'd actually prepare for us. The drafting, as I said, would be done over a 90-day period. The payment for this service would be $500, three payments of $500 each, and concluding at the conclusion of the work would be the final $500, and they're spread across that period of time. We are asking the village to cover these costs for the, from the TV, the cable TV fund balance in that these are not typical operating expenses or anything we really anticipated in our funding request for 2018. The Board of Directors and the committee plan to continue the development of this strategic plan. There's a lot of information in it, there's a lot of things that we think are going to change in relationship to TV broadcasting and TV services in our community, and we certainly will be reviewing that plan back as we conclude it and have additional discussions with you. Thank you.
Are there questions? So this isn't listed for action, right?
I thought I put action on here. You could still prove it, Steve.
We can go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. I thought I put it on there.
What's that?
It's not a rule issue. It's just a, it's a notice issue. Let me see what it says. Request for additional funding. I think the notice gives adequate notice that you would potentially be, if the action item is to approve the funding, the notice gives adequate notice.
Okay, thank you. So we need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Next, under public appearance, discussion with fire chief and possible action regarding approval ordinance number 18 day 05 revising outdoor burning restricted regulations. The first reading was waived at July 23 meeting from the special July 16 committee meeting. Boudreaux move seconded by Carpenter to recommend the village board the approval of revising outdoor burning restrictions and regulations as presented. Motion carried 3-0. So the possible first motion to consider if the board by two-thirds vote of members may suspend the rules and waive the second reading at tonight's meeting. Possible second motion, if the board chooses to suspend the rules, we may then consider adopting ordinance number 1805 revising outdoor burning restriction regulations. And the, there's a note that proposed pering burning ordinance will be reviewed at the August 27 committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Thank you.
This sounds kind of strange, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's necessary, so I'll make a second motion.
We need to do the first one first. Any discussion on that?
I'm just curious, what, why are we doing it this way?
It expedites the process.
Okay, and is that okay? I mean, is there anybody here who wants to talk about it?
Well, all you're doing is you're not, so there was a second, I think, right? So I can, yeah. So all you're doing is making the clerk not read the ordinance.
Oh, okay, yes, okay.
There's actually two things going on here.
The first motion. All we're doing is doing with the first motion.
Which is to suspend the rules and waive the second reading.
Just waiving the literal reading.
And then we move on to the next motion.
Gotcha. Okay.
Was this considered at an earlier board meeting? First reading, oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, we don't actually have to suspend the rules to waive the second reading, but that's fine. I don't think we need a, we don't need a supermajority vote to waive the second reading. This is where it gets a little complicated. We are, we're following the rules in the sense we had a first reading at an earlier meeting. Tonight it's on for a second reading.
Oh, you could have just, okay.
All we have to do is waive the second reading.
That's true.
And so you don't need a special motion, so it would be, we could move right to waive the second reading and adopt.
Yeah.
Sorry, we got a little agenda issue here. So what's, so the motion on the table right now is to suspend the rules, which you don't actually need.
Okay.
So my suggestion is to make a new motion to waive the second reading and adopt. Do I need to withdraw my motion? Why don't we withdraw the motion first? I'll withdraw my motion.
Is that okay at the second?
Yes.
Okay.
So it should just be? So it should be a motion to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Sorry, Mike.
I'll second that.
No, it's good, you got it.
Does that answer your questions?
Well, it does, so there's discussion with us, I mean, there's no members from the public that want to talk about this, or I didn't know, I just wanted to.
Yeah. You want to speak on this?
Absolutely.
Okay, come to the table, please, and identify your name and address.
My name's Don Gray. I live at 235 Jefferson Street. I just got a quote that I want to start with, from one of the founding fathers. "They who can give up essential liberty to attain little temporary safety deserve neither liberty or safety." And here's what I think. Where I live at 235 Jefferson, actually I have a large lot. It's like 1.1 acres, so I have a lot of downfall trees, a lot of brush that I pick up every year, and because of where I live, the village can't pick up my brush. I have tons of leaves every fall from my trees, and because of where I live, the village can't pick it up. And the simple reason is, is because 244 Jefferson happens to be a daycare, and all the employees park in front of my property to work at the daycare. So any day during the week, Monday through Friday, between the work hours of 7:00 to 3:30, which is public work hours, they can't, they can't even sweep the street in front of my house because of the parking situation. So I've always burned my brush in the backyard. I do have a big yard. I have a big fire pit in my backyard, way back by the creek. I don't, you know, and I, I just don't have no other way to get the brush to the brush site either. It would just take a huge trailer to do it because I always have a large amount of brush. I guess secondly, with the little fire pit, I actually have one of them too, and it just seems to me like we're trying to legislate common sense because really, anyone should know that your fire pit should be far enough away from your house that it wouldn't start on fire. Same thing with gas grills. I've had a gas grill on my deck for 12 years that I've lived there, never had an issue because I'm smart enough to keep it 18 inches away from any of the railings on the deck, which is what. So I just, I think if we ban the burning, it's going to make a tough situation for not only me, but homeowners with much smaller lots that actually have little fire pits. Because you want to restrict it to 15 feet from the house, you had 15 feet from the property line, a lot of the smaller lots aren't going to have that accessibility. So I'm just, I really think we should be able to burn when necessary. I do it maybe once or twice a year, at least my brush. So, and my leaves I don't burn at all. I actually compost them in the back of my property, but the brush is such a different issue. I think I'd literally run out of room if I tried to compost the brush, so that's basically my opinion on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Jeff, reaction on the pickup?
We do have that, we have a similar type problem with pickups around the high school and parking with that, and what we've done in the past is we've, if we're aware of the situation, we'll actually bring in someone early or after hours and have them just run the truck through there. It's kind of how we've had to accommodate some, or we'll put out some barricades and everything like that. So we can do it, it's, but Don's exactly right, it does make it a little more challenging for...
Hey, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm an extremely small terrace.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I know.
That's another problem, and if I put my leaves and brush out there, it's either going to be on the sidewalk or the road, so I just wanted to add that, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, no, it's a very near, I mean, Jefferson and Janesville are both that way, you know, with us, and it's older area, you know, narrower right of way. I mean, you know, we do, we do collect the leaves from everyone along both of those routes, it's not easy, and they do kind of spill into the sidewalk with some issues, but, you know, it's been, it's been manageable, but it, yeah, there's some inconvenience, I won't disagree with Don on that.
Thoughts over here?
So Jeff, is there a way we can get Don's brush off?
Well, I mean, I want to be careful not to create specific situations for individuals just strictly based off of, you know, one-site condition or whatever, but I think, you know, if, we do have people along both, you know, that do set stuff out on the terrace, and it does kind of lop over a little bit, sometimes it even lobs into the drive lane a little bit, which I don't have a problem with if it's on a temporary basis and right before pickup. You know, we accommodate people with putting up barricades if we have to for something like that, so I mean, we can accommodate those, it's just less than ideal. I agree with Don, you know, I mean, these, those parcels that are along from, from the railway trestle all the way out to really Bar Oak, some really, really deep lots, if you've never been in the back there, it's, they're actually kind of neat, but they're super, what is the depth of your lot, Don?
I think it's like 800 feet, I mean, it's 1.1 acres of my lot.
Yeah, I'll, I'll zoom in on here, you can see these...
It's like 800 feet.
Yeah, you can see these lots along here, and I'll put the aerial photo, which will show the creek going through here. Lot of them have, you know, have these really, really deep lots, they're nice, they're wooded lots, they're narrow, but, but you have the...
If you zoom in, I might see my fire pit back. Is that big, holders or...
I got a warning, Don, anything we don't want to see in the backyard here...
Yeah, the fire pit.
You got the fire pit.
Too close to the...
Actually, it's probably, is it, is it this one? Might be the fire pit right there.
I got a thought of...
Yeah, we'll get there, we'll get there, Jeff.
Does your neighbor have a pool?
Nope, that's my pool.
Okay, there you, there's your pool.
Yeah, it's actually farther to the back.
Yeah, so...
There you can see it.
Right there, yeah.
It's fairly large because, believe it or not, when I moved in there, there was a pile of brush there that had to have been, well, standard 1,500 tiers van, twice as high.
Yeah.
And that first fire I had, I had placed, because I noticed something about the three feet rule, and I thought, there's no way that's going to work where I live because I had flames 50 feet in the air. But, you know, I'm smart enough to burn on a cold day, and I don't have piles like that anymore. You know, that was just when I moved, I generally don't have piles that big. I try and burn at least twice a year, spring and fall, because that's, you know, during the summer, you get these rains and these winds and stuff, I'll get a lot of down sticks, and I always try and pick them up for mowing. So I, you know, I don't have huge piles like I used to anymore, but I just, I just think that for me to be able to burn is just easier than to try and fight the traffic on the street, fight the sidewalk or someone, you know, blocking the sidewalk or ending up with sticks in the road. And then you've got cars parking there, which will make it more difficult. It's even hard to get my brush moved or not because of, because of how the parking is set up on the street now that sometimes the pollinators miss me. I'll mention it to them, they don't care, but I'll mention it to them.
Yeah.
So, it's, you know, my, I have a little fire pit in my backyard too, near the pool, but I don't use that nearly as often as I use my brush pile to burn my brush.
Yeah, okay. Thoughts over here?
I was just going to echo some feedback I heard as well, about the 10, the 15 feet away from lot line structures and things like that. I think when it originally was presented at committee, it was 10 feet, then...
20.
Well...
Oh, 10 and 20.
10, and then it went to 20, and then we pushed it to 15, and with not everybody, you know, with the different sized lots, different designs of how the house is put in, I've had some concern expressed about 15 feet not being able to have a place to put it.
Right. Especially when you talk about the property line.
Right, property lines, or your neighbor's, like, might be farther than, far enough away from your structure, but then your neighbor has something, and so I heard a lot of support for 10, but not 15.
This started out with, I know, and the chief's not here tonight, but he sent a dedicated representative, I see in the audience, but, you know, this started with, obviously, I think chief just knowing that, that we really didn't have anything in our ordinances that helped him deal with people and fires, or fire pits, and, you know, I know most people understand, like Don was saying, you know how safe is, you know, how close is too close and everything like that, and unfortunately, people with turkey fryers and other stuff like that, you've seen the videos, you know, they, they don't understand or don't follow that, and I know his, his main concern is, is public safety. The other end of this was, is the, you know, we do get complaints from, from people that do pull, pull burning permits, because you're allowed to burn, I believe, on the first and third Saturday weekend of every month, when you pull a permit through the fire department. And there are individuals out there that go through the process and do everything they should, and then we get phone calls and complaints from residents that are complaining about ash and stuff falling on their, their vehicles, and, you know, we get pictures of ash covered, not, not covered, but you know what I mean, just bits of ash and everything everywhere. They think it's going to light their house on fire, they're concerned and all that type of stuff. So I think there's legitimate concerns, and then lastly, I think most communities have banned burning leaves, just because of the air pollution that, that causes, you know, leaves are terrible in the waterways and everything like that too, but they're also bad for, for burning because they just, they don't burn really cleanly. So I think I'm kind of summarizing where chief was with that.
Yeah, I'll speak short.
Excuse me, Tony, if you'd come in the microphone, please.
I appreciate what Don's saying, and the common sense side of it, I just wish we had that wider range, and I think that's where the chief is coming from with these ordinance, this ordinance change, is that we need to look at the masses and understand that at the end of the day, we need to worry about public safety, and you have things under control, but doesn't mean your neighbor does. You know, and the 15 feet, for one, the reason it's, you know, 15 is because it may be 15 from you, but now if it's closer to your neighbor's shed, we're protecting your neighbor as well. So it's a cyclical thing that we need to be cautious of, and our ordinance is probably less stringent than most in the surrounding municipalities. I think this was mostly from the city of Madison, and we've kind of limited it a little less, but in the end, we need to worry about the public safety aspect of this, and I wish we could have public burning. I wish we could do all that, but it's just not feasible, and like Jeff was saying, there's just not a lot of avenues to do things safely anymore or with the pollutants, and with the village being very open to having a brush pile or dump site essentially for all leaves and brush, that's essentially the avenue where we see to be able to, the outlet to put the materials.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, with the same respect though, you know, no disrespect to you, but I'm paying about $7 a month for fire protection. So really, you know, even though I'm using my common sense, I don't feel I should have to pay $100 a month for fire protection and not be able to smartly have a burn pile in my backyard. Like I said, I'm going to have serious problems if they ban burning brush in my backyard, I'm going to have serious problems. I'm not going to, either that or I have to buy a big trailer to haul it. I do have, part of my yard is fenced in, which makes it more difficult to get the brush out because I've always had a brush pile there. I mean, the 12 years I've lived here, I've always burned brush in my backyard, and normally I do it during the day, I do it when the winds are calm, I mean, it's common sense.
Oh, I see what you're saying, there's nothing...
If you pre-educate the public, we don't necessarily have to ban the burning issue. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, Don, if everybody did, did it the way you do, we wouldn't be here tonight, I guess. So unfortunately, it doesn't work that way, so I know Jeff is waiting to make some comments.
Yeah, first I want to thank you, Don, for coming down and being a part of the conversation. I think it's really important that, and I've said this and I'll continue to say it, that village residents take ownership of the process of governing the village. It's great for us to be elected officials, but we, we are put with decisions we have to make every evening that are going to affect the entire village without necessarily knowing what the village wants us to do. So thank you for coming and bringing us your perspective. The challenge, I think, when it comes to ordinances, is that we have to govern a village of almost 10,000 people. It's, it's yet to happen that an ordinance that we enacted didn't leave somebody on the periphery, didn't negatively affect somebody, and I think as a village, we have to be able to respond to the individual needs of the residents and govern a village of 10,000 people at the same time. So what I would suggest is, rather than try to amend the ordinance so that every individual in the village is represented, we draft an ordinance that's as general as it can be and specific as it needs to be, to be enforceable and to be meaningful, but yet empower the fire department in this case, and the public works department in this case, to create a solution that would fit your specific needs. And I, and I would be in favor of that, as well as the specific needs of any other resident that might find themselves some way outside the ordinance. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Amanda, go ahead.
I was just going to also suggest that there might be a way to work with your neighbor to ask them not to park in front of your house when you have brush to be picked up. I mean, maybe you could have a friendly agreement with them if it's, once every two weeks, you're going to pile it out there whenever the pickup is, just...
Well, I can, I can break up one situation right, because that side of the...
Excuse me, Don, I need to request you to come to the microphone so it picks up on TV when you're going to talk. Thank you.
I had a situation a while back, a couple of years ago, where the west side of my property, I have a big gate to get into my fenced-in yard. Parking issue down there, I share the driveway, so I had a little pop-up camper. Can't park it in the driveway because of the shared driveway. It's a very tight driveway between me and my neighbor. We literally have enough room to drive into our garages. We try not to block it, you know, per, per our agreement. So I had a little pop-up camper that I used to back in there, and, and back in by my swimming pool, actually. Wanted to go camping on a Friday afternoon, went over to Journey Above, said, hey, it's possible someone can move a car. We are conducting a business here, you need to leave. That was how cooperative they are. So I'm going to say it's probably not going to work out with them. The only time I've seen them move is when they were doing the road construction, and generally they'll move maybe a few spots down the road, but, and, and they have ample parking in there, but they use it for their customers, to drop the kids off, to pick the kids up. So the employees don't park there, they park on the street, so the people can, you know, the customers can drop their kids off and pick them up. So their parking ladder, their driveways, it's empty most of the day, when they could actually be parked in there, but they park on the street. That's something I can't answer.
We, we could always consider a no parking first Wednesday of every month, or whatever, you know, whatever that day would fall, I'm trying to remember when we cut, when we start chipping brush, but, but we could say, okay, if we start chipping brush on Monday, Monday morning, we could say the first Tuesday, and it's the second Tuesday of every, or second week of every month, we'd say no parking, second Tuesday of every month between 8:00 AM and noon, or something like that. That would allow us to be, I, I mean, city of Madison does it to be able to clean, clean the gutters and everything of the leaves and that type of stuff.
Do you think it'd be possible for you to meet with Don one-off and bring back proposals that we could act on?
Don and I have to meet way too often right now. Yes, but absolutely.
For the sake of time?
Absolutely.
Sure.
I mean, what, we'd be, like I said, we work with all the residents on kind of creative situations.
I like that idea better because it's, it's hard, instead of allowing exceptions to the rule, because everyone wants some type of exception, to just say, look, this is, this is what we've got in place, and we'll help make that workable for residents on streets where it's a problem or whatever, and we're in favor of that type of solution.
Well, and I, you know, I, I'm not going to disagree to that, I just, I, I'm of the opinion that I really feel I should be able to burn the brush in my backyard. That's just my opinion. I mean, whether or not it happens, that's just my opinion. It's just, it's easier for me to pick it up and, and put it in that pile because, believe it or not, 75% of the brush I pick up is in my backyard because I have large trees back there. So I still will have the issue of, A, getting some type of trailer or something, making multiple loads, because I do get a lot, I actually have some trees I have to take down because they're dying, but it's just, it's just a convenience thing for me, and I know it's an issue for you, so if it, if it changes, it changes. I mean, if I can't burn back there anymore, I'm going to have to figure something out.
I would not be in favor of changing the ordinance because of your difficulty only. That would not be the compelling reason for me to change the ordinance for the entire village.
Right.
But I do think that if I were in your position, I would go meet with chief, Lenzmeyer, and explain my situation and see what I could work out.
Okay. Well, and I, I'm not sure if I'm the only one with this situation, I think there are more, I'm not sure if the village residents are aware of it, I mean, believe it or not, I found out about it in The Observer last week, so I was like, whoa.
So chief Lenzmeyer's got an example, it's not that long ago actually, of a controlled burn that was done up in the town of Dunn, by somebody that has regularly done controlled burns, knew how to do them, chief saw the smoke, drove up there, met with the gentleman, said, I think you might need some help. The gentleman said, no, thank you, I've been doing this for years, I got it under control. And what was it, maybe, chief came back to the fire station and told the fire department, hey, you guys, get ready to stand by, you're going to be getting a call in a couple hours. In a couple hours, they got a call, and Tony can correct me if I'm wrong, but that controlled burn burned all the way from the town of Dunn down to the, the, the feed mill.
Sure.
Before the fire department got called and had to respond, burning completely through several properties, destroying ATC power lines and equipment, and that was not predicted by the individual. And I'm, and I know that he felt terrible about it, and I know that it was very expensive. Fortunately, the Oregon Fire Department was able to respond and put the fire out, but I think that's just a great example of how somebody with experience and knowledge who's done the same thing for years, made a miscalculation that wound up costing thousands and thousands of dollars of property damage to other people who were not involved in the decision at all. And that's what we're faced with, I think, as a village. I could tell you another anecdotal story about, my best friend was grilling with a gas barbecue, he's, he's 50 years old, same as me, and on this particular day, that gas barbecue blew, and it's caught the side of his house on fire, and by the time the fire department got there, his house, his house was fully, fully engaged in the fire, he lost the whole side of his house, plus his eyebrows, and he, to this day, he couldn't tell you why it happened, he'd had the grill for years, on that particular day, something went sideways, whether it was a pinhole, the hole was dry, what have you. So I think, you know, I think you can...
I understand, I understand your perspective, my perspective, I mean, I'm not doing a controlled burn, I'm actually, I have, I have a circular set of boulders around my burn pile.
Yeah, so the point I'm trying to make is that whether you're using your own common sense and your experience to design a burn that's going to be safe and it's going to be contained, or whether the gentleman out in the town of Dunn is doing a controlled burn using his common sense and his experience to design a burn that's going to be contained, things can happen that are beyond your control, and fire is a beast that can take on a life of its own, and it happens in a minute, and by the time you can get a response out there, other members of the village are involved, and while it hasn't happened in the past, that doesn't mean it won't happen in the future. So again, from the perspective of the ordinance, we, I am responsible for trying to put guidelines in place, ordinances in place, that protect the majority of the residents of the village of Oregon. Now, enforcement falls to, in this case, the fire department. I won't be out enforcing these ordinances.
Sure.
Or in the case of ordinances that affect the law, it'd be the police department. And ultimately, those officers are the ones that have to use their judgment to decide whether the ordinance has been violated, whether a citation is warranted, so I, I think that your, your concerns are valid, and I think your concerns are important. we, I am responsible for trying to put guidelines in place, ordinances in place, that protect the majority of the residents of the village of Oregon. Now, enforcement falls to, in this case, the fire department. I won't be out enforcing these ordinances.
Sure.
Or in the case of ordinances that affect the law, it'd be the police department. And ultimately, those officers are the ones that have to use their judgment to decide whether the ordinance has been violated, whether a citation is warranted. So I think that your concerns are valid, and I think your concerns are important. I question whether the concerns should shape the ordinance or whether they should shape the enforcement or whether your specific needs aren't better handled at the departmental level than at the village board level.
Okay. Well, I guess the only other thing I can come back with is the gas grill part of the ordinance. I understand that probably 85, 95% of the houses have vinyl siding. I have steel. I can put the grill right next to the house and not worry about it. But I use common sense. I'm not going to put my grill anyplace close. I actually have a wooden deck that I used to have the grill on. Now I built a patio out by my driveway that my grill is on. And it's 18 inches away from the siding. Even though it's steel siding, it's not going to cause a fire in my building. So, I mean, normally if you have a grill fire, you hope for the common sense.
So, Don, a couple of things to think about when you talk to Jeff. One, and this may not work given the neighbor, but where I live over by the high school, for years I did the neighbors' leaves, they were elderly, I enjoyed doing it, and students parked there. So when I got the leaves by the curb, I just handwrote a sign, "Students, please don't park until leaves are picked up," and they never did. There was not one student car that parked there. No, that might not work with your neighbors. I don't know if we can put some no-parking signs on those things or not, Jeff.
We can, I mean, the police can actually put out, if we need to, the police can easily put down a no-parking sign for a day or two days. It's not a big deal.
Notify you that it's out there, time to pick these leaves up and maybe get those. But I think too, and I may be wrong on this, given the guys in public works, but it seems to me like on Jefferson Jamesville with the small terrace, brush could be on the lawn side of the street. You know, it's not the terrace, not the sidewalk, it's actually in the lawn. It's what, four or five feet to get to that to grind this?
In a narrow section, in a narrow section, we would allow that, yeah.
And then you could get ground up too. So those are things to talk to Jeff about when you meet and see him. He may have the bad ideas, but we'll see what that can...
All right, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, appreciate you being here, Don, good job.
Steve, Matt has a couple of comments.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just looking at the, this is an ordinance I haven't seen since it's been revised. And I'm noticing a couple of things that I think may need to be looked into.
Okay.
There's reference, well, we both heard, we heard some discussion tonight of the fact that people get permits or that burning is allowed at certain times and they get permits.
That's the current.
That's the current ordinance.
Okay, this ordinance as drafted makes reference in two different, one place to obtaining a permit and another place to having a license. So for example, in the first sentence, it says, "The village of Oregon and the state fire code," I'm not really sure about that, "prohibit outdoor and open burning without a permit." And then later it says, "Campfires, cooking fires, and grilling shall be allowed without a license as long as the following conditions are met." So the suggestion is that there's some way to get a permit or a license. I'm not sure why it says that. Is there an intent to allow, and is there somewhere else in the code where there's a permitting or...
That's what's being discussed on August 27th about, since last time we talked about this, there's a natural period of burning in some people's yards, some people ask that.
Okay.
So that will be the additional license or permit that will be allowed via application.
Okay. So I think until that's adopted by ordinance, we shouldn't be talking about getting permits or licenses in here. But if and when a permit or license process is adopted, then we can make reference to that in here. That would be, yeah, I don't think it makes sense right now to be making reference to a permit or license process that doesn't exist yet.
So can we adopt the ordinance with an amendment? Or does the ordinance have to be amended and brought back?
It's up to you. I think you could, if you feel comfortable doing it. Someone could propose an amendment to the current motion, which is to adopt the ordinance. And the amendment could be to delete the reference to a permit and license. The reference to a permit is in kind of like an introductory paragraph after section 9.14. And the reference to a license is in section 9.14, sub 2.
So what's your preference?
Well, is that the only challenges that you've got with the way the ordinance is written?
Well, as I say, I haven't reviewed this draft. I reviewed an earlier draft, and I can see there's some changes. I just haven't had a chance to do a comprehensive review. So it may be fine, I just don't know.
Might make more sense for Matt to read through it and make suggested amendment recommendations to the chief and bring it back in a polished version for the board.
Just wait and see once, would be my opinion.
So it's a table of motion to approve, right?
Table it.
Okay, so the motion to table this if...
So then the first motion dies?
No, it's just placed on the table until it's brought back for consideration.
Yeah, it's just a procedural thing. So if somebody wishes to make a motion to table this till now?
I'll move to table it till next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's tabled, so. All that, to get to that.
But big thanks to you, Tony, and thanks to the chief for working on these ordinances. So I think this is necessary for us to, you know, clean our ordinances up and make them work for the village.
Okay, that takes us to item four, approval of minutes. We have three, July 9, 2018 meeting. July 10, 2018, special joint village board meeting with towns of Dunn, Oregon, and Rutland, the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission and the senior center, and July 23, 2018 meeting. So need a motion, a second to approve all three of those, please.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the amount of $674,557.42 for approval.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
A question, this is probably for Mike or Lisa, but the computer magic for Guardian 2, which I assume is the name of a software. It's $1680 is the vendor number.
Right. That's just our monthly support fees that we pay to them?
So that's support?
Yeah.
For that software, is that correct?
They provide, you know, computer support to us, including security.
Okay.
It's a monthly bill.
So that's nothing new then?
No.
Look here real quick. Okay, I guess remove and install, I think it's impound lot. Is that the fence around the impound lot?
Yeah, that's, we, that's part of the project for relocating the youth center building.
So were we able to save fencing, Ben?
We saved, I believe, the chain link fencing. The posts were in concrete, so they had to be recycled.
Glad I don't have to do any of that, I was surprised at the price, five grand for that.
For the fencing?
Yeah.
Actually, it's a pretty good price for the fencing.
I'll take your word for it.
Yeah.
I've never guessed that much, those are all the questions I have.
It's high-security fencing, and so it actually has three strands of barbed wire on it. And it's meant for protection, it's heavier duty.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, what's the Safe Bill Wisconsin LLC, what do they do for, there's like a permit fees in March that's $42, and then in June it jumped to $5,000?
That's our building permit service. We hire out the building permit.
So building season started and then we got...
Building inspection.
Yeah, every once in a while, I mean, we pay Safe Bill based on percentage of the building permits that come in. So if a building permit is $5,000, we pay them 75%. That's our contract amount with them. And then we get 25% of the amount. There are periods of times, though, where there are certain things like special inspections that don't fall under a building permit. And we'll ask them to go do an inspection of something, and that's when those small, like $42 here or there, $95 and stuff will come in.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, we have motion, second to approve vouchers in the amount of $674,557.42. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Oleg?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item six is community input. The rules are listed there. If anyone would like to address the board tonight. Don? Welcome.
Thank you for having me here. And I represent the 43rd, I'm the state representative for the 43rd Assembly District. I'm here because I represent a third of Oregon. I know I represent Steve, I'm not sure if I represent anyone else because I represent area around the high school, the middle school, and back by the golf course. So I'm here to tell you what my 20 months in the state assembly have done. And first of all, I want to thank all of you for what you do. I served 30 years in city government, one capacity or the other. I was recreation director, served on historical preservation, was on fire and police commission. I was city council chairman for a while. So I understand all the things that you deal with. Currently, while I'm in the assembly, I also serve as vice president of Milton School Board. So I've been on the school board and on strategic planning. Also, I'm head of the tech committee for the school board. So I wear many hats. As my job in the assembly, I've been a teacher for 42 years. Actually, I've taught here in Oregon for the last seven. That's my connection to this community. I did five long-term positions in Oregon. In the last two years while I've been in the assembly, I've also did substitute teaching. So I get back to this community and hear the pulse of what's going on. So I try to fill in when they don't have enough substitutes because that's become a problem for every community is to find qualified substitute teachers. So I still come back and do that whenever I can fit in when I'm not doing something in the Capitol. In my near 20 months in the assembly, I introduced 11 bills, one which I passed in the assembly. The other ones, I got all co-sponsors for, so I'm hoping to get reelection, up for reelection so I can continue to pursue getting those bills passed in the assembly. I held three forums. I held a technology forum, I held a transportation forum, which when all the people attended said, you know, "We need to find a permanent solution." I thought we had the assembly on board, but at the last minute, we couldn't get a permanent solution passed. But I'm hoping in next session, something like that will come. And I held a small business forum because small businesses are very dear to me. And that's probably why I just was appointed to the Public School Trust Fund Committee, which we're going to meet next week and deal with the trust funds. That's money that you guys borrow from. I think the village of Oregon had a loan from the School Trust Funds Committee. It has been a study committee appointed. We have six committee meetings appointed every six months. I think I gave notice to my office that it was taking place if people were interested in coming. But next Thursday, we meet for the first time, if you're interested in coming up to the Capitol to listen to that study committee. I also was just appointed by the governor to the milk board, which I will be meeting Monday at that cap. Now, I feel good being in the minority to be appointed to these committees because somebody from the majority has to appoint you. So I've been known to work in bipartisan fashion because that's the way I believe legislation should be carried out. In my first 20 months, I was awarded two hometown heroes. We get to appoint people from our assembly district who we think did something extraordinary. I was able to get two hometown heroes in my first term, which I felt very good about because some people can serve their whole life and never get one of those people to serve. I also tried to get involved in helping not just in things in the state assembly, but I took my own money and I went to Washington D.C. and lobbied for money for teacher training and for the Title IV program. And so I spent three days out in Washington D.C. visiting our state legislators, lobbying to get more money for teacher training for schools and get more money for technology. I don't know if all of you are aware of how, what the E-rate is, but as a state assembly person and concerned about education in our state and concerned about education in our school district, we get about 50% of all of our technology funded through federal government money. And so this money was being held up and tied up. So I felt important. In fact, our state tech people asked me if I would go out as a school board member and a state legislator comes out to lobby, they felt that'd be important. So I did that at my own expense and were able to double the amount of money that we got previously. So at least I know for the next two years, our schools will be funded properly to take care of their technology. As a result, the state technology commission has given me an award for doing that on my own. And so I should be receiving some type of award at the Capitol later on. So these are some of the things that I'm doing as your state legislator in your community.
Good, thanks, Don, sounds like you've been busy.
I usually am, thank you. Thank you for having me. I have to go to another meeting, so I can't stay. But your issues are, I remember being in your position, so.
Good, thank you very much.
Thanks for the job you do.
Keep up the good work. Okay, Jeanie, we're going to jump ahead to 9B, which is planning commission. And 3, if the presenters would like to present, otherwise they can wait a couple hours. It's up to you.
Yeah, all right.
Should we get a motion first or get the presentation?
However you'd like to do it.
Okay, we'll get the presentation.
Okay, so I'm going to read this, I'm sorry, Jeanie's going to read this item, 9B 3.
Sure, so this is discussion on possible action regarding a site plan. This is Brett Reiman, the Spanos Group, on behalf of Bergamot Real Estate Holding Company LLC, property owner, regarding development of lot 499 in Bergamot. And this was a consideration of the specific implementation plan. Do you want to do motions first or...
Well, we'll let them present first so we hear what they have to say, then we'll do the motions. Thanks, Jeanie. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hear me, no?
Can't hear you.
Okay, there it is, thanks. We got our stuff. Thank you for bumping us up, appreciate that. It's my daughter's 11-year-old birthday today, so she's at gymnastics now, so I had some time. After that is to Red Robin, so can't miss that. Again, Brett Reiman and Brian Spanos, here to talk about the Bergamot lot that we had purchased. I actually purchased it last week. Been to planning commission a few times, going through the site plan, GDP approval, SIP approval. And we're here to talk to you today about, I believe, the site plan. And I don't know, not sure if you guys want to get into finishes, but we have finish boards here too that we've put together for each of the duplexes. But first, we could, just wanted to say Jefferson Crossing has had opened up July 1. Didn't look like it's completed because still some of the exterior work, but we are 100% occupied for leases. So we're extremely happy about that. We did not project that fast of lease up, so it's been great. I know Judy at the chamber's been just throwing people at us because there's been a lot of people that have called. So just the lease up has been really great in the whole process with Oregon. And I know it's the center of the village and we've had some issues with some construction and trying to keep that tidy so people can still park down there. And I think we did a pretty good job on that, and we're just looking forward to getting all that cleaned up and having, I think, our open house August 23, so.
Judy is asking you possibly change that.
Sure. More time, that's good.
I actually suggested that, yeah.
Okay. That works for us. We're trying to put, get a lot of things, we think we can make it, but another week or two would be great.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the Bergamot senior living, we're calling it now, we don't have a name for it, but it's a three-acre or so site off of Bergamot Boulevard that we are looking to do nine duplexes. So it's going to be a condominium association, it'll be 18 units that we'll sell. So we'll sell the individual units. It's going to be a 55 and older development, so it'll be age restricted. We'll look to do it phased over time. There'll be ranch duplexes. So with 55 and older, it's really important to get, reduce the steps, keeping as larger ranch duplexes. We'll have the ability to finish basements if people want. But as, right now, we'll be just constructing the first floor, or finishing out the first floor. It's about 1,700 square feet per side. And then if someone would want the lower level finished off, it's another 700 square feet or so. They'll have nice patios, nice decks, great finishes, which Brian can get into if you guys want to hear about them. But we're excited about the project. So Brian, unless you have something to share, we'll open it up to questions.
We have laid out here on the board, we have nine individual units and we have five different color kind of palettes that will be worked off of. And there'll be no duplication, no similar unit will have the same color palette. A lot of our colors are based on just kind of neutral blends. There's really three primary colors used in each floor plan. There's a main siding color, the soffit and window tend to match, and then there's a shaker or accent for the gables. So again, they're broken down with just very neutral colors. There'll be some stone, miratech 4-inch trim around all of the windows, not just... There'll be some stone, Miratech four-inch trim around all of the windows, not just the ones on the front. So we'll wrap all the windows with a four-inch Miratech trim. We'll have glass panels, which is not in this rendering, which we are adding in the garage doors themselves. On the top panels will be made out of glass with some detail. All the windows themselves will have some kind of grill pattern in them for additional detail. So we've looked at a lot of other similar projects and tried to pull out nice characteristics that we felt add to kind of the quality, you know. As we look at the quality of these units, we're juggling price point and finish, and I think this is a good mix of both, you know. Obviously, you can always add more, but then the price point goes up, so we're really, we're working on a price point that's going to be very marketable.
One other note to this plan, we started off with one duplex plan at first with the Planning Commission and our original site plan, and through some recommendations of some of the members, we modified that. Now we just have, I think Brian mentioned it, but we have two different plans. One of the requests from the Planning Commission members was to change it where they didn't see the driveways or garages from Bergamot Boulevard. Duplex 1 and duplex 9 had their driveways and garages facing Bergamot, so now we went with an L-shaped duplex, so those are shielded from Bergamot. And that also shortened our concrete, our driveways, sorry, our private drive that's needed on the back here by changing those two plans. We also use that L-shaped plan in the back, and it reduced that T, so added more green space and reduced the driveway.
Are there questions, Jerry?
Yeah, do you have a estimated completion date yet?
Of all, like of all nine buildings? It's going to be based on how these, the first phase sells. So Phase 1, we're looking at right now is three duplexes, and then as those sell, we'll look to do another phase, but we would see it's anywhere from, I mean, what, three to four-year process? I mean, maybe two to three if it's really.
Depends on the economy and demand.
Yeah, but I mean, if we get really strong demand for the first three buildings, then that next phase might be, you know, four or five, or who knows? We might go for all of them.
Once we get a building under contract with our banking, we'll basically start construction on the next, on the next phase. So if Phase 1 has all nine units under contract, even if they are not complete, most likely, kind of depending on the variables of the economy and other things, construction will start on Phase 2. We'll also time that with the market to some degree. Don't really want to finish a unit in the middle of January, so a lot of times we'll time those construction dates around the opening sometime in the spring or summer.
I understand. Have you done your pricing yet?
We have. Right now, we're hovering on the high twos on where these units will sell for. Now, obviously, if they finish basements or make interior upgrades, that could change, but our goal is to definitely keep them south of 300 per side and work based on the changes that might come in.
Okay. All right, and if anyone has questions, they contact.
Lake Stone. Yeah, we got to get our names straight. We seem to change it every time we're here with you guys. We'll figure that out in the next one and make sure we get.
Thank you.
Other questions? We did have a letter at our places with some residents concerned about the flow of water and maybe them having to use a pump, but we did have a report from our engineer, right, Jeff?
Yep.
That goes through all that, that that's been thoroughly researched and just on our part, we should check the grading as things, lots are done to be sure it meets the requirements, so.
Definitely, we did meet with the neighbors that were, that raised some concerns at the first Planning Commission meeting, met with them out on our site with our engineer and have come up with a plan. And I think that was, the GDP approval was, had that in there.
I forgot to tell you this, but after that meeting, we did add in the orders that that berm on the north side has to be shown on a plan before this is effective.
And the engineer's working on that, so he can share that.
Thank you.
Can you give me the geography? I know it's up near Drummond. Is this south of Drummond, east of Bergamot Boulevard?
I'm on it.
North of Drummond.
Top side.
I'll put a big star. You are here. Okay, so this is Drummond, Drummond Drive, this is County Highway CC, this is Bergamot, and this is the lot, this is Lot 499 right here.
Oh, yeah.
Jeff, it was designated for senior housing for years. They were trying to sell it and, yeah.
I get an aerial photo here so you can kind of see, yeah. So this is the detention pond right here. These are the Bergamot townhomes.
And where's the neighbor that's concerned about water?
Well, this one right here, Mr. Fink.
To the north, yeah. And he's out in the township. Not that that matters, but he's, I added that, not that it matters.
Not that there's anything wrong with that.
Yeah, there's something wrong with that. No, he's been good to work with, I know that.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Thanks for your presentation. We'll go back to business part then. So Jeanie, if you want to do the motions, please.
Sure, so I would make a motion that the board by two-thirds vote, suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm curious.
And then my second motion is that we adopt ordinance number 1813, changing the zoning classification of Lot 499 of the plat of the Bergamot to a planned development district.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Before we leave this, could we do 5 for the other audience member?
Yes, okay. No, that's fine.
If you guys don't mind.
Sure, so then we're going to skip number 5.
Please.
And before we do, I should just want to thank these guys. The Planning Commission tends to put people through their ringer duly, right? And they responded to all the requests and all of the criticism or very professionally and made the changes accordingly, so thanks, guys.
Yeah, you guys have been great to work with on your projects. We appreciate it.
We're very proud of what we're doing in Oregon.
Yeah. Yeah, we like having you here.
So by the time we all see this here, it's, they've been beat up pretty.
Yeah.
Just wanted to, for anyone watching, that seemed really quick, but they've been to so many Planning Commission meetings, you wouldn't even imagine.
Four or five, yeah.
Yes, I've seen this so many times.
The chair of Planning can be just brutal, I know.
Yeah, yes.
Well, they aren't bleeding, so.
See you, guys.
Bye, guys.
Okay, so then the same holds true of number 5. This has been thoroughly vetted at the Planning Commission level, so now it's to us. So this is a discussion of possible action regarding removal of access restriction to Burn Hill Drive on Lot 1 of the Leeward addition to Bergamot plant, so plat. So I make this motion to get on the table that we approve Resolution 1835, releasing the restriction on the plat of Leeward addition to Bergamot.
Second.
Jerry?
Second.
There you go.
And I don't know if you knew us talked about this, but.
Maybe Jeff, you want to? Yeah, I'm just going to go in. If everyone remembers this, last year, Bergamot did finish the connection to Brynhill Drive to Lincoln Road, and so this is Leeward Lane, this is Lincoln Road, Winward, and they made this connection through. Part of that also, they did a replat. If you remember, there were 10 lots, and see where these five really long, deep lots are. These people don't burn though in these lots, but the.
Too soon, Jeff.
Too soon, too soon, okay, thanks. So they converted these 10 lots into, they used to be like duplex-style multifamily houses that were accessed with one single drive off Brynhill. They combined them into five single-family lots with, the proposed access was off of Leeward Lane. In the original plat, you'll see here, or in the plat that was put in, there was a note here that said, no direct access. That was for a long Brynhill Drive. I did a little research into that and found out it was actually something that came through in the original submittal from fiduciary, and it kind of carried through on everything that carried through in the Plan Commission, and so it ended up becoming on the plat. The applicant wishes to put a bungalow-style home on this property, and I think there's a little picture of it here, really nice-looking home. And what that does, it really lends itself to having the garage in the back, and then really lends itself to have that garage access from the back, which would have access off of Brynhill Drive. We've looked at it, Mike Slavney has looked at it, there's support from both the planner as well as myself as the zoning administrator for doing this. We ran this by our crack legal counsel, who came up with Section 236-293, which allowed the public voting, the public body to remove a restriction with a vote, you know, on a plat. Summarizing that, okay, Matt?
Perfect.
Okay, and so it is perfectly in your right and everything if you so deem to remove that. And, yeah. There are other driveways all along Brynhill Drive, all the Bergamot, or the parade of homes sites, everything up Brynhill Drive, there's driveways. This is the only lot it would affect. It doesn't allow driveways for the other lots off of Brynhill Drive because there's no easement there, so it's, and quite honestly, by setting the driveway farther back away from the intersection, if the applicant had to put the driveway on Leeward Lane, it would be closer to the intersection, so this is actually a better solution. But it's up to you for discussion or questions.
So discussion and questions? Anyone?
I think it makes total sense.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, so with the motion second to approve Resolution number 18-35, releasing restriction on plat of Leeward addition to Bergamot, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Now, we're going back to Item 7. Item 7 is Proclaimations and Announcements. Item A, Board Comments, anyone? Okay, Item B, Staff Comments?
Just the October budget schedule, and then just a couple of notes here about upcoming board meetings. Next board meeting, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Park Board to review a new naming rights policy for Village Parks, and this will be especially important for the JSC Park West fundraising efforts. And then we're having a joint meeting with the library at 5:00 on the 27th, and then two committee meetings after that.
Okay.
But no, no meeting next Monday because of the election. Right, Peggy, I finally got that right? Thank you. I corrected numerous times about that.
Okay. Anything, any other staff comments? Okay, we'll go to Item A, Communication, Misslan is Business, Discussion Possible Action About Library Board Appointments. Recommended motion is to appoint Coral Goplin for a term ending in 2021 and Laura Setata for a term ending in 2019.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? That's all, Scott.
We need to say something.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Review of Procedure For Filling a Vacancy in the Office of Trustee and Possible Board Direction. Village Administrators Note, in the past, we have requested interested parties to submit a Village Application for Appointment to Village Board or Committee and Commission, along with a letter to Mike indicating their interest in serving on the Village Board. The Board would then invite the interested parties to either August 20th or September 10th Board Meeting to ask them a few questions, which Mike would provide from past election processes. So Matt, I think you're on.
That procedure is certainly allowable. From a legal standpoint, the Board, given the timing of the vacancy, has the option to either leave the seat vacant for the remainder of the term. This term would run through spring of 2019, or appoint someone to fill that vacancy for the remainder of the term. There is no set legal process here required. If you choose to fill the vacancy, it's really up to the Board to decide what process you want to use. Typically, there's a process not unlike what was just described, and then there are nominations, and then there are votes on the nominations. Simple majority vote is what's required to appoint someone to fill the vacancy. Could it be a public, non-secret vote on that if we get to that point? That's about it.
Okay. So the first thing you decide, do we want to fill it or not, right?
Yeah, and then I'll make a correction in my paragraph twice I'd have a little bit.
Okay. So we have eight months. So do we want to fill it or leave it vacant?
I would recommend filling it.
Yeah, me too.
Sounds like that's the majority.
Done!
So Mike, do you want to make comments on the process?
Yeah, I think rather than sending a, sending me a letter, I think if they just do the application, there's a bottom part of the application that you can just explain why you're interested in serving on the Board, rather than doing a letter and the application. That'd be an early change on there. And I would actually, because it's August and people on vacation, I would actually hold that until September 10th.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I think the 20th is way too quick.
Yeah.
You deserve a chance to look at it.
And the 20th is going to be kind of a long meeting anyways, so I think we want to, so I would hold it to the 10th, in my opinion.
Okay.
That would work for the Board.
Does that sound all right, September 10th? We'll start the process.
I like to have schools back, families back, gives everyone a fair shot.
And just use the application, which has been working well over the years, so.
Yeah.
The application that was in the packet, yeah.
Do you have the questions we used last time?
I do.
Wonderful.
I found my file, yeah.
Okay, good. I thought you were.
I mean, they're pretty basic questions.
Yeah. Okay, are there any questions or comments on that? Otherwise, we will proceed as indicated. Okay?
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mike. We'll go to Item C, The Waterfall Motel Update at 1053 Park Street. Village Administrator Note, all the tenants were out by the July 9th deadline. Thanks to Senior Director Rachel Brickner and her staff for their assistance in working with some of the tenants to find new housing by the deadline. We also want to thank the Director of Public Works, Jeff Frau, and the Public Works staff for their help in preparing the building for removal. The fire department is planning on burning the building this fall for training purposes.
So just a comment, I'd like to see us do something to ensure that the building stays free of squatters and that the outside doesn't get vandalized, windows don't get broken, et cetera. And one of the thoughts that comes to my mind is to just rent a fence from Struck Irwin and run it around the perimeter of the waterfall restaurant, listing the restaurant as no trespassers, condemned, however you want to list it.
Yeah, I did post, I posted eight no trespassing signs on it about a week and a half ago. We could rent a fence, I mean, we can look into that as far as the construction fence. We haven't had any troubles yet, but I figured, you know, it was only a matter of time, but we're trying to, that, we're hoping that this can be taken care of probably in September.
I just remember the Methodist church.
I agree with you, yeah.
And I don't want to see that happen on Janesville Street.
That was an ugly scene, yeah.
The waterfall restaurant's bad enough, let alone the motel.
So you got a price and bring it back on the fence?
Yeah.
I'd like to know what it's going to cost before we think about that. One thing different with the old church property is a lot farther from downtown, and so that might be of our benefit to have it stay, not be in a big mess.
I'll bring that back next meeting.
Would it be out of line to have the police department do some extra drive-bys just to keep an eye on it in the meantime?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Anything else? Okay, we'll go to Item 2. This is listed for action, asbestos inspection and abatement. Recommended motion to approve the proposal from Advanced Health and Safety in the amount of $4,840 plus DNR permit fees for asbestos abatement at the former waterfall motel.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can you tell me why we're doing this?
Legally, you have to.
Yeah.
You have to abate the asbestos in a way that.
Regardless of how it's torn down, whether it's burned or torn down with like an excavator, you have to abate, you have to remove the asbestos.
So is the waterfall motel going to be burned, controlled burns, same time as the motel? Is the waterfall, waterfall?
Restaurant? No, this has nothing to do with the restaurant.
This is a motel.
The waterfall motel.
Yeah, it's just the motel.
I see.
That's all we control.
I see.
This is, this is the same company that, that, they come in and they do the asbestos review and they come in and they actually take samples. I did not include all the, all the sheets of the, like thirty or forty sheets of, of stuff that they sample and honestly, in most, most times today, you're finding it in caulk around windows. You might find it in tiles in the floor, that type of thing. And then, once they do that, they give you a report. Um, this company's done really nice job. They did the youth center, they did the youth center garage or the garage next to the youth center, now they've done the waterfall hotel for us. So now that they've done that, they've provided us with a proposal to do the abatement. So they come in and their Tyvek suits and everything and remove the asbestos, dispose of it in a proper manner. They also fired the, or filed the, the demolition permit for us as well, so, um, they've done a nice job for us.
Other questions? Okay, so the motion is second to approve the proposal from advanced health and safety in the amount of four thousand eight hundred forty dollars plus DNR permit fees for asbestos abatement at the former waterfall motel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item D, discussion possible action about Prairie Parkway extension. Uh, Rooker Millkey, our engineering firm amendment to agreement, recommend a motion to approve the amendment to the agreement by Rooker Millkey in the amount of four thousand five hundred eight dollars for the Prairie Parkway extension project funding from the street improvements fund. Need that motion, please?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll give a little background on this. This, actually, I'm gonna show a few pictures 'cause, uh, there's some, there's some neat, where did my pictures go to? Maybe I won't be showing pictures. Actually, I will. Um, this is a project that's, that's been, I mean, it's been challenging from day one, but it's gone, it's gone very well. Our engineers have taken good care of us with it. Hang on here. It's like chewing gum and walking at the same time.
Which most people generally can do.
I know. I never, uh.
I was biting my tongue, but good job, Jeff, thank you.
Got your back.
You know what, I'll find these here a little bit, but let me, let's keep this moving, uh, moving along. But basically, um, uh, the, the, the road looks really, really good. I had some pictures earlier and I'm not sure what happened to them, but I'll find them again, but, um, the road looks in really, really good shape. Um, and they're actually going to be placing the, um, curb and gutter and sidewalk, I believe, this week and hope to be possibly even paving into next week, uh, which is fantastic progress. I'm considering, uh, where they've, um, had, uh, where they've come from and getting to this point. I will say this. I'll be able to do this, so. Is this, uh, yeah. So this is a picture, uh, this, uh, this is a neat picture. So this is the culvert that actually went under the roadway. This is a twelve-foot by six-foot culvert and each one of those sections, I think there were twenty-seven sections, were, uh, thirty-nine thousand four hundred pounds to be lifted into place. Um, so what we're actually looking at is, this is actually the Badfish Creek, the Oregon branch of the Badfish Creek. You can see how dry it is because they actually pumped everything around. You see the, the, the pipes over here and, and the generators and everything. They pumped everything around to create a, a, a nice environment to place this. Had a wonderful pad, um, in place and, uh, were able to, let's see if, oh, never mind, let me go back to that. Uh, just a wonderful pad in place to be able to place all of that and, and have it, uh, go in really well. So, um, that's gone in really well and the roadway is actually, it's to a point, I think Jerry was, like Jerry was talking about, I think he was, um, illegally jogging through a construction site, but, uh, he, uh, but, but there, there are, the neat thing is, is actually the, we have equipment within the project site driving north to south.
So I shouldn't be driving on that either?
Do you think Jerry was running right down the middle of it?
Yes, I do believe he was probably running right down, but, so anyhow. All right, so, so, but, but Rooker Millkey's done a really nice job. Um, I talked to Jason about this. He volunteered to come to the meeting tonight and I said, no, I'll, I'll speak on your behalf and, and, uh, they're asking, it's not, it's not a, uh, significant amount here considering the one-point-two-million-dollar project, what we're dealing with. I think it's very important at times on certain projects to have a strong engineering pre, presence and I think this is one of them. We had to overexcavate six feet in the muck to get to, uh, to a point where we could actually put a roadway base in. It's very important that this culvert goes in well so that it doesn't cause problems because fixing, trying to fix a problem with this culvert later in the future would be extremely costly, so, um, I think they've looked out for our best interest through everything. Uh, Preasey's doing a nice job. Um, it'd be my recommendation that, that we authorize this.
So are there questions or comments?
So the extra forty-five hundred dollars, that was additional time?
That's, that's, yeah, that's for additional onsite engineer time.
Okay.
To observe const, or contractor activities.
Understood, thank you.
Yep.
If you went by there much this summer, the roadway looked like a canal.
It was, yeah.
The rain, it just filled up time after time, so. Okay, so are there questions or comments on this motion? Anything else? Okay, the motion is second to approve the amendment to the agreement by Rooker Millkey in the amount of four thousand five hundred eight dollars for the Prairie Parkway extension project. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Okay, real quickly, I found the photographs, 'cause these are cool. It come up. Okay, so this is the, this is actually now looking north towards a sewage treatment plant as you come around the corner there. This is looking south, turning around, looking south, so this, this is if you're driving from the ice arena. Now you've just crossed the creek and now you're gonna turn right and head, you're gonna run right into Park Street over there. Let's see what this one is. This is the, showing the, now, uh, the Badfish Creek going under the roadway. You can see the roadway coming across here and, and going around. Um, some people will say, well, it's set too low. DNR requires we set these about a foot to eighteen inches into the bottom of the bed so that it naturally silts in and creates kind of that habitat, um, along the bottom. And, yeah, this is kinda nice, this just shows. Um, this is, this is kinda neat 'cause this obviously shows how, how nice the roadway looks right now. Here's the wastewater treatment plant and then a lot of people don't realize is one of, part of this construction effort is creating about a, a five, uh, bay, uh, pull-out spot for the ice arena, um, for drop-off of, uh, athletes and everything. And I don't think this is, this shows the connection over to, um, Park Street, right here. This is Park Street where the cars are, so, thanks for your patience, but I think that's good and it's kind of fun to see the progress on it.
Yeah, and done in time for school.
Yes, that is the plan.
Okay, go to item E, upcoming road maintenance and paving information. Lots going on there. Do you wanna make any comments here, Jeff?
The only comment I'd like to make is one of the things that is, that is coming up is we're actually going to replace the culvert that is at, um, Netherwood, um, on Netherwood Road, um, right just downstream of the concrete ditch. Um, I can show you. Um, and so we will actually have a roadway closure anticipated this week and will be rerouting traffic onto, um, hang on, let me get up there. Okay, the culvert's right here off of Netherwood Road. This is North Prairie Parkway, so we'll be rerouting traffic over to Landover and to, uh, Richards Road as a bypass because, and, and Public Works is going to be installing this culvert. This is something that we can do and save ourselves a considerable amount of money by us doing it. But, uh, it will take us about a week to, to take care of that before the paving effort goes in and that paving effort begins actually, um, start of next week.
Okay. Any questions on the road maintenance plan?
How long is that gonna take on East Netherwood? When would that be done, would you estimate?
For the, for what, the culvert?
For the paving and the, all that, that stretch?
It'll, uh, be done, the, the goal is to be done with everything before Labor Day weekend.
Okay, good.
Which is before school. That includes all the work around the high school, which I'm just ecstatic about. Painted Dolan has been very responsive in saying they wanna be done and out of there before the school starts. The only thing that may chale is, we do have to go back now and then paint all the lines and the curbs and that might take us a, a few weeks to get all that done, but there'd be a little chaos with that, but.
Yeah.
We can handle that.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Okay, we'll go to item F, uh, discussion regarding rotary bike path update and possible action regarding approval of task order from Rooker Millkey for surveying the bike trail. The funding would come in the two thousand seventeen borrowing for bike trails. So Jeff, you wanna summarize your memo, please?
Right, so this is a picture of our bike path, um, right here. You can see, this is the bike path. Sorry, it's a little dark here, but this is the bike path. This is about the two-point-five-mile marker. If anyone's been out there, um, you can see that's actually, this is when it was probably at its peak. It's completely inundated from, from right here all the way down around the corner over here. So it's probably about a, a five-to-six-hundred-foot stretch. And we also have another part that's inundated around the corner and then a part behind me. When the, when the path went in, and you know Hans came and spoke before the board a while ago and, um, has brought this up, you know, to everyone's attention, we've had to close the path. It is something that, you know, we wanna be very careful when we do something that we don't quickly react to something and spend money, um, just for the sake of, you know, if, if something's not gonna happen again. It's kinda like flooding. If it happens once and doesn't happen for another hundred years, then you really shouldn't have to worry too much about it. This is something that, you know, we've watched and quite honestly, the, the levels are not going down. It's a natural kettle out there, um, meaning there's just nowhere for the water to go. And quite honestly, I think with the wet weather that we've experienced in the last five to ten years, I think it's just something that we've, will continue to see, you know, raise a little bit over time depending on, and we could go into a dry period for ten years and this whole lake out here dry up completely. But it's, uh, not, not very lik, we don't think it's very likely. We've had some questions from board members and some, and from residents that have called in and say, well, when are we gonna open it up? And, and what can we do? And the long and short of it is, there's, it's not like there's something out there damming this up that we can just go out and, and get rid of. Um, at least that's our, our understanding of the situation. So, you know, there's, you either move the path or you raise the path. And, um, both of those can be fairly expensive options. We might have some, uh, difficulty, uh, we don't know, we have not approached the landowner, so we don't know if they would be, amenable to selling us additional land, um, to allow us to move the path up, up gradient, which would be to the left in this photograph. We don't know the costs of whether it would take to put this in maybe boardwalk is, is one option when things start to get really wet like this. Or if, uh, the topography would allow us to actually just to bring in fill and raise this. So what I've done is I've asked, uh, our engineers and I, that's on our approval tonight, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, yep. So I've asked our engineers just to, to provide a, a survey, so we can go out and survey this while it's still wet out there and basically do, I think it's about eleven-hundred, twelve-hundred feet of path along there and do a nice topographic survey, um, so that they can not only record the high water elevation this year, but then also give us an idea of how much we would have to remedy. Um, this is, this is really the step one in determining what we do with the path out there. And, um, it's not gonna give us all the options, but probably what'll happen after the survey, when we've had a time to look at it, is I imagine our engineers will come back or we'll, we'll ask them to come back with a proposal for a feasibility analysis on what the cost would be for boardwalk or for filling or for relocating the path.
Okay.
Can I ask, I'm, I noticed that one.
Before we proceed, we should do a motion, I'm sorry.
Motion, okay, go ahead.
So the motion, uh, would be to approve the task order for Rooker Millkey for surveying the bike trail?
So move, second.
Thank you, okay, go ahead, Amanda, thank you.
Um, I was just wondering, is there any reason why we can't just pump the water out of there? I mean, if you don't expect it to flood again, wouldn't that, I mean, it would be kind of a pain, I get it, but I, I don't know. I mean, it, why are we talking about fixing the path? Why don't we?
We're talking, let me pull this up on the map here. I'll, I'll kinda, um, show you where we're talking about here and, uh, okay. Let me get my bearings here. Okay, so, Fish Hatchery, here we go.
So is that Swan Pond there?
That's, that's Swan Pond, I believe, uh, no, actually, here. I'm, I'm on, I'm on the wrong side of the road here, that's why, okay, here we go. All right, let me get the area photographed. So you, you see this, see these little, this, this little water hole out here and this little water hole and this little water hole and everything like that? Okay, those are, those are when this photograph was taken, which was, uh, twenty-seventeen. The extent of that water hole right now is exactly where my cursor is, is outlining and I think it even goes into, uh, whatever this lake is over here. In other words, this whole area is inundated. And it's, it's basically a kettle, so, so Amanda, yeah, we've, we've thought of that, you know, but where would we pump it? We'd have to start pumping it several thousand feet probably into, eventually this gets, if this gets high enough, I mean, super high, it would eventually start to drain into the Badfish Creek drainage over here. But right now, you can kinda see this light outline of wetlandish, you know, uh, area. It's pretty much, you know, occupying everything in there right now, so it's a very, very, very large area. And the, the bike path at its deepest point that I measured was almost twenty inches deep over the top of the bike path. So if we were to try to lower that lake by twenty in, twenty inches, and I'll just estimate an area here, um, it's a lot of water.
Well, there's no place to go, is there, Jeff?
Um, not really, no. Uh, I mean, no, I, I mean, it, you, you have to, then, so, what is, uh, five million square feet?
When you, when you're actually driving on M and looking, and looking at the lake to the south, it was a, in the height part, it was a good, at least ten feet past the fence line, that's how, that's how much it's grown.
So it's a hundred and twenty-three acres.
Square mile, huh?
Yeah, no, a hu, square mile's six hundred and forty, uh, acres, but it, the, the hundred and twenty-three acres is, um.
And a twenty-inch depth.
Twenty-inch depth times twenty, twelve. Um, two-hundred-and-five acre feet. Do you wanna have my gallons?
Two-hundred-and-five acre feet?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it'd be even.
Well, you'd have to get a, you'd have to get a permit.
That's one acre, two-hundred-and-five feet.
Yep.
Two-hundred-and-five square acres of water.
Correct.
We'll, we'll never get a permit to do that.
Yeah, the DNR, I don't think they allow it, not, I'm an expert, but I don't think they'd let you do that.
Yeah, and the, the area we're talking about, that, that the problem is, I'm gonna zoom in on it here.
Yeah, that's, that's why, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying you have to pump it all the way out of the kettle, but just pump it away. I mean, there have to be like ups and downs, I don't know. Is, isn't there a berm or something nearby where you could?
No.
No.
See, it's.
We'd have to. You killed those beavers.
All right. I, I tried.
We could transplant them out there, well, you know.
We'd have to create a berm.
Yeah.
What Jeff and I talked about is you, basically, you know, following up on your idea, we'd, we'd create a berm, pump the water over the berm and the water's held back by the berm.
Right, which, with it being wetland, it would be filled within a wetland, so, I mean, it's, that's a, a very, it can be a long process to permit something like that. We've looked at some temporary bladder dams, we call them, um, that, uh, could be possib, you know, a possible situation. But we have to remember that you can see how remote this is out here. We'd have to take gas pumps out there. I'm, I don't know how often we'd have to do that, um, whether that'd be a daily process or even a couple of times a day just to keep it dry. Um, you know, we don't wanna expend staff to be able to do that. The other thing is, if you go with like a large bladder dam out there, it is subject to vandalism. I mean, they're, they have a tendency to attract, 'cause people like to do stuff like that and, uh, see what happens.
But we.
Did you call that a bladder?
A bladder dam.
What is that?
Jeff, Justin wanted to say that at a board meeting.
I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable.
Thank you, thank you.
Is this Jeff Bingo?
I, yes. I don't feel comfortable searching bladder dam on, online here in front of everybody.
You can do that at home and send it to me later.
It's actually, basically, think of, think of it like a long water-filled tube and, and it can be anywhere from twelve inches in diameter up to even forty-eight inches in diameter. You see them, uh, actually, most notably, if you look on, there was a house in Houston that was protected by, and they, and they just ring on the entire house and it's like a big old sausage sitting there all laid around the house and it, and it, the water, once it's filled with water, it's, it can hold back up to about two-thirds of depth on the outside.
So, so we thought about doing that, right, Jeff?
Yes.
And that way, we would, we would do that, pump the water off the trail and see if, if this weird, uh, condition of, of snow right at the end of April and getting seventeen inches of rain, Jeff?
We had seventeen inches of rain in April, I mean.
That, that's what happened. We got all the snow at the end of the winter and then, so that doesn't happen again with the water recede and not have to do this expensive fix.
Well, but it just, I mean, no expert here.
No.
Looking at that map though, it looks like they, it was built right along a, you call it a kettle, but it's basically a lowland, right?
Correct.
An overflow for that lake, so it's potential to happen again, it seems.
It will happen again.
Yeah, it will, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But, but the trail had been open for, with the opening.
Three years, two years, two and a half years.
Any issues and so, the water was way back the last couple of years.
When the trail was put in, you can see that, you can see the path, actually, you can see the trail right here. It comes along over here.
Right.
And, and it, it comes, it hugs this tree line right along here. You can see for a while, you know, there was no open water until you went almost.
It was very dry.
You know, several hundred feet out, out to here.
Right.
And, yeah, this was right along where the easement was. You can see the trail come along here. But we've got a wet spot right here and we've got through here. Um, the other, you know, options, this, this is all uphill over here. You know, if we were able to get a, an easement or additional property up here, we could, we could bring it up, you know, reroute it. But the other challenge with this, and this is where, this is where a feasibility analysis looks at this, is we would have to work with the landowner here to be able to get a field road so that we can get heavy equipment and dump trucks and asphalt machines and everything like that back here. That's why maybe a boardwalk is a better option. But we don't know until we survey it, till we start looking at it. I don't like it, I mean, uh. I don't like it, I mean, people use that path a lot and a lot of commuters use that path. And runners, bicyclers, you know, we ran into a bird watcher out there when we were out there, a gentleman I ran into one night, was out there on his own, rollerblading and, and had a weed blower and was, or leaf blower and was blowing off the path just 'cause, he said, "I like doing it," you know, so it's, it's a shame that we don't have it open all the way.
So we, we, we acknowledge that people have been very patient with us, but we know, we know we need to find a fix for it, right Jeff?
Correct.
I think what I'm hearing is there's no quick inexpensive fix for this.
That is correct.
And-
You heard correctly.
And, and so it's gonna be costly, and so if we kinda drag our, not drag our feet, but if we kinda just take our time and see if possibly this will reverse itself, that might be the best thing to do for a while.
Well, I think we should do this, oh, the boarding-
Do the study.
We should do the survey.
Yeah.
We should do that, and I think we should come back with the options and, it, it is, actually, that's an interesting photograph, that just shows you how, how much it's filled in.
Yeah. Well, didn't a farmer out there say that it has never been this high by any means in forty years?
Forty years, yeah, and his forty years of farming out in this area, he had never seen it this high.
Yeah.
But then the climate, people kept saying the climate's changing, so are we gonna continue to have these wet springs and summers? You know, I don't know, because we, I think Jeff and I really thought by now it would have been-
Right.
It would dry it up. And you can actually go down, like yesterday I was out there, and you can see where it's actually in some places where the, the path is a little bit higher, it's actually gone down like that much, but, but not, this is not, this is not, and then there's a lot of frogs and ducks out there.
I did find a trespasser out there that one day.
There's a lot of frogs.
Yes, it's from the town, so it was all right. He was the released, he was released without any trouble.
She's sweet.
It's cute.
Is that a leopard frog? Thank you.
Okay, so-
Never mind.
So back to our motion. We have the motion to hire Mookie to survey the bike trail in that task order. Any further discussion or comments on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We'll keep you posted on that, thank you.
Thank you.
So item G, discussion of possible action about signage at Rome Corners and immediate school, South Perry Parkway. Recommended motion, authorize Public Works to procure and install additional signage as shown on the signage exhibit prepared by Public Works. These signs would prohibit parking and stopping along this section on school days between seven AM and four PM. Need a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Just to facilitate traffic flow and safety, right?
Yeah, you know, when Jeff was talking earlier, and you said it very, very well, I think, in, in that there's things that we do here and you vote on that affect people, and sometimes it's for the greater good, but it, it always kinda, can affect other people negatively, but part of the problem is that the, the drive of traffic around RCI, and we made a few changes last year with the no turning signs, those helped, but we still need some no parking, no stopping standing on school days signs, and you'll see those added up there for 2018. Both at, at the crosswalk to be able to allow a nice sight distance on both sides, and then from the east entrance to South Borough Oak Avenue to allow people to stack up because more and more people pick up their kids after school, and if they're not, if there's people parked there, then they're actually stacking up in the drive lane, and then people can't get through and buses can't get through. So, the school district has, has reviewed this and approved this plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Questions or comments? We have the motion to second to install additional signage at RCI, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item H, discussion of possible action, request to execute addendum to Dane County 2018 Purchase of Service Agreement at the Senior Center. Recommended motion to approve that addendum to Dane County 2018 Purchase of Service Agreement. So need a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Rachel?
Three mornings a week, we have an adult day program at the Senior Center. We serve people who are at risk of social isolation and provide respite opportunities for their caregivers. There's a charge associated with that program, which makes it difficult for some people to be able to afford. The county has for many years provided us with some grant funding to help make that feasible for people. Looks like this year, our need is going to outstrip the money they had originally made available to us, so they have graciously indicated that they have an additional ninety-six hundred dollars that would be available for our low-income seniors to take advantage of. We just need to execute that purchase of service agreement addendum.
Good, thank you.
Rachel, I'm curious, what, what, how much is it to participate in that program?
Our program is a half-day program, and it is thirty-five dollars for that half-day.
And do you have, do you have more people wanting to participate than you have room and staff for, or?
No, we're licensed for sixteen, and currently I think our enrollment is thirteen.
Okay. Seems like a really good program.
Yeah.
A good, filling a good need.
And, and the county has been very supportive. I think Rachel's memo says eighty-two thousand dollars, this would bump it up to for the year, so.
For the Senior Center as a whole, and yes, we really appreciate the support from the county.
Yeah. Further questions or comments? Okay, so the motion to second to approve the addendum to Dane County 2018 Purchase of Service Agreement, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. I think I saw, was that in here too, where Ziggy's, there are about thirty to thirty-four people every Thursday to have lunch there?
Yes, that's what we're at.
Saw that someplace in the packet.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, item I, discussion of possible action, Public Works Parks Attendant and Crew Person. Recommended motion is to approve assigning Billy Hanson to the position of Parks Attendant and Crew Person position at his current rate of twenty-three ninety-two per hour.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
It's a great opportunity for Billy. It's, uh, with Dan retiring, it had a void, I solicited in from my staff if anyone would be interested in stepping in that role. We spoke to two individuals who had approached us, both Gary and I did, and actually, with the support of both of them, they, they actually wholeheartedly would support Billy doing this, so it's, it's a win-win for us, and I think he'll do a nice job.
Yeah, yeah, good for him. Questions or comments? Okay, so we have the motion to second to approve assigning Billy Hanson to the position of Parks Attendant and Crew Person at his current rate of twenty-three ninety-two per hour. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Item J, discussion of possible action, declaring village property surplus. Recommended motion is declare the village hall chairs as surplus, that's not these, that's the ones that were in the bank.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? These we got from Oscar Meyer, right?
Yeah.
Those are back there, yeah, great improvement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item K, review of impact fees and Billy permits information. Any questions on this or comments from staff?
Building permits are down a little bit this year, but with Autumn Ridge and Phase One of Hill, Highlands and Netherwood, they're actually gonna be breaking ground in that, and then-
Maybe some duplexes that-
Duplexes with, with Spanery, Lake Stone, Jefferson Crossing folks, and then as well as we fully expect, a lot of stuff in the Lodopolis property to, to break next year. So we actually expect a strong year.
Looks like the total value though is, is gonna exceed last year.
Stuff that's being built is, is high value, and actually, you know, Jim Leese's latest addition will be, they're gonna be pulling building permits on that really soon.
Yeah, I think we're gonna actually have a pretty good year.
Yeah.
Yeah, depending on the weather.
Any other comments on this? Okay, so that takes us to item nine A, the park board meeting on August first, 2018. That would be trustee Peterson, please.
All right. Just read this whole thing, right? Just the bull doesn't-
Yeah, you get to, I don't have to.
Okay, all right. So this is discussion of possible action regarding Eric Anderson and the Soccer Association park usage in fall of 2018 and spring of 2019. It's, we recommend that allowing the Oregon Soccer Association to use Rustic Vineyards Park as a backup playing field as required per their agreement with the Oregon School District for the Fall Fury Soccer Event, September fourteenth through sixteenth, 2018, conditioned upon parking limited to one side of the street from ten AM to six PM. Of these separate motions, they're sort of related, but-
So we need a second?
Second.
Thank you, now you're all set.
Okay. So during the Fall Fury, there's all, you know, they had used every available soccer field pretty much in Oregon, and they have an agreement with the school district to use the high school soccer fields, and if for some reason, the only way they get to use those fields is if they have a backup field in case of, I don't know, the weather makes them unusable, I don't know what, I don't know their whole agreement, he didn't get into the details of that, but that's part of the agreement, so this Rustic Vineyards would be a, a backup standby field, and they've used it in the past, they already have soccer goals there on site. They're kind of a pain to move around, they're doable, but they're already there and we didn't see any problem with granting them that use, it's just for one weekend, we just want a traffic on one side of the street for safety reasons, visibility, people dropping kids off, and, you know, just, it, it made more sense, and to help ease it for the neighborhood, and they're, they intend to inform the neighborhood people around there what's going on.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, so we have the motion to second as indicated by trustee Peterson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next one, Amanda, thank you.
Uh, so the next recommendation we have is allowing the Oregon Soccer Association to use Rustic Vineyards if, if the RCI playing fields are unavailable while being repaired for the fall twenty eighteen season, conditioned upon the hours of play or practice are relayed to the neighbors, that it is known to the neighbors that the usage is temporary while the RCI field is being repaired and that parking is limited to one side of the street and the organization coordinates portable toilets at the location at their expense.
Second, please. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, okay, go ahead.
Okay, this one was a little more complicated because what's going on is there's a soccer field at RCI, it's school district property, but they are in the process of, they have permission to upgrade that field. The Soccer Association does, and they're paying for it. And while that's being done though, they're out a practice field, and so they're asking, they ask for temporary usage for fall and spring. The board was reluctant to do spring also because of J.C. Park renovations going on. They're hopefully gonna start next year and everybody's gonna be down fields and they didn't wanna go that far, so we, we just approved for the fall twenty eighteen season and then we'll see about extending it possibly in the spring. And again, we wanted to make sure the neighbors were informed that the hours are, are gonna be relayed. It's basically just gonna be daylight, there's no artificial lighting there, so it's just daylight hours. And again, parking, and they're going to coordinate with the Softball Association, which also uses Rustic Vineyards, and they have a portable toilet that Softball pays for. And so they were gonna coordinate and maybe just extend that contract and keep it there for the fall for soccer.
Are there questions? So we have the motion second to approve Rustic Vineyards while RCI field is worked on, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Close, motion carries, thank you. That takes us to nine B, planning commission meeting from August two, two thousand and eighteen. Trustee Carpenter, again, please.
Sure, item number one was consideration of civic campus plan. Village planner Mike Slavney is incorporating public comments and written recommendations made at the August second planning commission meeting into the final civic campus plan, so that plan will be ready for us for consideration until the August twentieth. Item number two, this discussion of possible action regarding amending the specific implementation plan for the new youth center at one-ten Oak Street, so I'd make a motion that we approve resolution number eighteen thirty-four, approving the amendment to the S.I.P. for the property located at one-ten North Oak Street, which will be the new youth center building.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Um, so this came for the planning commission, we'd seen this multiple times, and I think the things that were added, let's see, the dumpster corral was added.
The color.
Exciting thing.
The color scheme, you can see out there.
Yeah, color scheme was approved and added.
The lighting.
Yep.
The lighting.
Yeah, the lighting.
So this is-
It's gonna be a beautiful building.
Yeah.
Yeah. Be a fun building. Here's the color scheme, that's-
Questions or comments? So we have the motion second to approve resolution number eighteen days thirty-four for the S.I.P. for the new youth center, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, thank you. We did item three.
I think we did that one.
Yep, we did.
Yeah.
So then, item four is FYI only. The planning commission approved the site plan for the new Public Works cold storage building through a long discussion about fasteners that I didn't understand, but I don't know. It'll be fine. There's disagreement amongst the, amongst the architects and the builders and the commission. I mostly sat there and went, what are we talking about?
What kind of fasteners?
No one escapes the planning commission.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, yes, they really, yeah, they put Jeff through the grill.
Yep.
Which we enjoyed.
No one's a friend.
Right?
Yeah.
We enjoyed it.
That's the chair of planning, what can I say?
No, he wasn't even there, he got off easy.
Well, his image carries on.
And then, item C, this is a discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number eighteen ten. This is an ordinance to repeal and replace appendix C to chapter eighteen of the Village Code of Ordinances related to construction standards and policies. So Steve, do you want to run the public hearing part?
Sure, you can if you want to, it's okay.
Yeah, you, you got it.
Okay, so, I will open the public hearing and first we have the village staff's presentation.
Yeah, I mean, in a nutshell, this is just something that every community should go through and update every once in a while. I believe the last time this was done was two thousand and five. Codes change, materials change, sometimes how you do things change a little bit. And so what we, we noticed that there were a lot of things in our, in our, we call them the construction standards that could use a little cleaning up. So a while ago, we, we, we hired Rooker-Milkey under your direction and permission with, to update these. And this is what we have now, so it really is, it's nothing new other than I think we've clarified some things. And they've actually taken some of our details that were, looked like they off, were off of old mimeograph machines and are now much, much better looking and everything, so much more accurate, so.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone from the public who would like to comment? Seeing none among the crowd, we'll go to village board comments. Anybody?
Hold on.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing and come back to you for item F, Jeanie.
Sure, so the first motion I will make is by two-thirds vote, we can suspend the rules and we have the first and second readings tonight, so I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then my second motion will be that we adopt ordinance eighteen ten to repeal and replace appendix C to chapter eighteen of the Village Code of Ordinances related to construction standards and policies.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Thanks, Jeanie. Item ten, minutes now requiring action, now there are minutes on our packet and therefore online from July five, two thousand and eighteen, Oregon Area Fire EMS Commission meeting and information. Eleven is unfinished business, there is none new business, there are operator licenses, I don't think there are any tonight. Nope, there's not. So, item thirteen, there's some future agenda items listed. So item fourteen, the board will meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight-five-one E to consider town of Oregon Lincoln Road proposal, tax increment finance agreement for TIC project and memorandum of understanding for building a library, the board will adjourn from closed session, so need a motion, second, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? Roll call, please. Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes, so we'll go to closed session, we'll stay here and we will adjourn from here.